Okay, we're recording. So this is a Village of Minerva Park. Work session nine twelve twenty twenty. And so. Does anybody have anything we I kind of sent out a, you know, the agenda? Does anybody before we get started on that want to have anything to declare in terms of needing to leave early or wanting to prioritize anything or whatever?
Um, I am coming off day two of four nights, so I may not be here the entire time, but I will hang on as long as I possibly can.
Right? So. I'm gonna see my first page of my report. All right, anyone else? Okay, so in that case, we'll go ahead and get started with talking about what's going to be on the agenda for council. And I'll start as usual with legislation then. And does does anyone want me to put that up on screen or does everyone have their copy?
I've got mine.
All right, so. Mark, you want to go, are you ready to go ahead and review the legislation?
Mark, you're still muted.
There you go.
I had my cursor on a different screen, so the keyboard trick wasn't working. A little hit the spacebar thing apparently wasn't working when I'm got split screen. Yeah, give me a second here to download the council packet because I think there was one that I thought was weird. It was one of them was listed as passing as an emergency, but it was also listed as going to have three meetings and I was unsure on that, but. Oh, come on PDF, there we go.
Pretty sure that was the fee schedule one, sorry to interrupt, but I'm pretty sure that we did the first reading and then Eric was wanting to get it passed this time for Westerville Schools. So it's just wait, I thought it was waving the last reading. But maybe I'm wrong.
Um. Revised yeah, fee schedule and declared emergency. No, that one makes sense because third reading, we're going to wave and pass on the 14th. So that one makes sense.
So then it might, then the only other one that it would be would be the sewer survey one. Um, that's the new one that we just added. I believe that one's going to be an emergent. Well, it's a discussion for you guys to have and I'll just tell you guys.
One that I was I was confused of because it had down first reading the 14th, second reading the 21st, third reading the 28th, but then saying have an emergency.
And then passing into, okay, so the reason for that is is here's what Mike is at basically. And I, this was in the email that I sent originally. Mike wants to. Depending on when you guys get this done, you may or may not be able to get the survey done this year. This is for the East Shore Court project and to be completely upfront, honest and fair. I, this is a project that I do have a couple of residents that are in that vicinity continually asking what's going on. This is also the project that's been going on since 2017. This is the project that we transferred money from the waterline fund to the storm sewer fund to continue to move forward on this project. So a survey is now what's neat that Mike Flickender is saying that we need before this, before we have our final discussion before it goes out to bid, because he said that we would have a final discussion of the plans and the process before it goes out to bid. He needs the survey done. He needs a survey done before he can move forward. So that's entirely up to you. He would love for it to just be read once, twice, three times, whatever, but pass it as an emergency in order to get it to where they could, they could do the survey in October. And that's where I'd asked you guys if you guys were okay with doing a September 21st instead of a work session, do what we did a couple of times, do readings and then, and then go straight into the work session, just a legislative type meeting, a regular meeting just to read legislation. But that's up to you guys, that's for you guys to discuss. If you guys don't want to waive any readings and you guys don't want to pass it as an emergency, it basically it could, it will just hold up the East Shore Court project that's been in process. Let's just be devil's advocate for three years already, what's another month? So I don't want to say that, but let's just be honest. And that's that. So now you guys can make that decision and if you guys could tell me what you guys want to do or you believe you want to do, I'll fix the legislation for Monday night.
So there you go, I think I'll just drop it out there then. Do we want to do that as an emergency and just get it passed Monday night? Or do we want to do our readings and such?
Like, I think there's, there's, there's more than those two options, right? It was we can, we can go through all the readings and pass as an emergency or waive any number of the readings and passes an emergency or wait, go through all the readings and not pass as an emergency, right? So that's, that's the full, that's the full view. And I'm of the opinion that this is a project we've been talking about since 2017. And hold on, Tony, Tony, if I can finish my, right? The purpose for readings is community awareness. Anybody who isn't aware that this is an ongoing project at this point is, you know, I don't think we find any more awareness with two more readings. And it is something that we should be moving forward on. I am, I personally am on board to move this along as expeditiously as possible.
That makes sense to me as well.
I'd like to, you know, I often wonder if people are paying attention to the things that I say over these past months is that the East Shore Court project is not a priority when it comes to our sewer issues. We've got a sewer line that we don't even know where it goes to and it is heading in that direction. The whole East Shore Court issue started years ago before we had all the information that we have right now. And as a priority, East Shore Court is the lowest in our storm sewer issues, in my opinion, because we don't know where all the water's coming from. And, and to authorize a, a survey or to figure out the capacities of the pipes or whatever it is they're trying to figure out is premature when we don't have all the answers to the the water where it's coming from up line. You know, and it just, I say this over and over again. And I know that East Shore Core, you know, the East Shore Core project was taken on before we did any of the mapping of the, of the storm sewers. And it should, it isn't, even though it's been on the slate for as long as it has, it isn't a priority. You know, so I'm, you know, the short answer is I don't think we need to pass this as an emergency. And I wonder whether we even need to do it at all at this point. That's all I have to say on that.
Um, I'd like to say that is a topographic survey. It would be needed regardless of when this work gets done. And certainly, I don't have a problem with doing it. Gives us more information of the lay of the land.
Graphic survey?
Yes.
I thought it was a survey of the capacity of the, of the pipes.
The topographic survey is a survey of the lay of the land and it, it, it's part of what is, yes, it's part of what needs to be done. So I want to do, yes, so it takes a while, it needs to be done, it needs to be done no matter what. It won't, I don't see what's the problem of getting it done now.
Yeah, I also would agree that it's one of those things that needs to get done. We need to make some motion, some, some movement, some progress. I would be okay with just getting it passed Monday night. And I think that's all we're council people on that, so there we go.
The other big thing. Hold on, if I can just throw in there for, for awareness, right? If we are intending to waive readings, we'll need five votes. And currently from our going around the table, we're at four, four to one, so.
That'll make it exciting on Monday.
There you go. I just wanted to make sure we all, we were all tallying the same way here.
And to be honest, I don't think councilperson Colonel is going to vote no on anything that has the word east shore and sewer in it.
You never, you never know.
Never know, but I'm I'm, I'm thinking that. Um, the other thing that I see on the agenda, my agenda again, tabled sidewalk legislation. Um, I have not seen the revised copy of that with the change editorial changes we made, so I'm not sure where we can go on that. I might just have missed it or it might not have been sent out yet. I'll let Eric speak to that.
Sorry, I'm kind of at a remote location. So on the fee schedule, you just wanted to see the updates, yeah, no, I apologize due to my schedule, I'll have something out Monday.
Eric, I don't think this was the fee schedule, this was the sidewalk ordinance, right? There were updates.
Apologize, I missed that part. So the, um, yeah, I will get all of your, I actually did review everything yesterday morning. And so I will have everything sent out after I get back in town. So you, you'll have all of this Monday, probably mid-morning.
Okay. And as I recall at our, which I think was a legislative session, those changes were all the changes that anyone had come up with needing, so assuming they're made, I think we can move forward to reading that Monday night, which I believe would be its third reading. And unless someone has something I missed, which is entirely possible, I think that's most of what legislation's looking like.
Well, you too, I'm not sure you heard Mayor talk about the supplemental appropriations, the first reading, that's a new one?
Nope, because I was a little bit late. What was the supplemental appropriations for, okay, I thought this might have been, sorry, I had this confused, I think with when we shook around money for the change in hiring, but this is a new one.
New one, right?
Yeah, this is getting a little more funds appropriated for police salaries to cover the overtime for police assisting Columbus.
Yeah, we can't charge Columbus for that.
It doesn't look like they're paying, so cops got to get paid.
They tried and they, they're rejecting, I think Eric, all the municipalities around here are in the same boat.
Yeah.
And that wasn't very, that wasn't very friendly of them. Not very mutually assistive.
I look at it as a bargaining chip when we negotiate with the fire department.
How to look at it is if they have to, as far as mutually assistive goes, if they have to come and help out here for some reason, they're not sending us a bill. So, yeah, that doesn't seem to be too big a deal.
Um, the other thing, let's see, there's a the development text will be the third reading. so just to say we'll be doing a third reading and a vote on the leaf pickup and the development text amendment.
Can we talk about the development text for a second with Gene? I'm trying to understand how long, you know, because we're, we're, I guess, importing part of the development text into our code with regards to the fencing. How long, like for example, it says that in the new development, you're not allowed to have an above ground pole. How long does that rule remain in effect? If we don't adopt a rule like that? You know, that, that's my, my question is how long does a development text rules apply to the development?
Until changed.
Excuse me?
Until amended.
Until we amend?
The text.
So the tech, all the, all the requirements in the development text apply to the new development forever? Unless we amend the development tax?
The theoretically forever until you, yeah, it's, it's basically their zoning code.
I thought once all of the all of that was accepted into the village, right? So once the, as, as they, once the development is done and all of the reserves land and all of that were accepted by the village, the those, that it would all then fall to the regular village code. You're saying that's not the case?
Yeah, in a planned district, the idea is there's the cookie cutter approach of using our standard zoning code in the standard zoning districts. But with planned districts, you encourage, you know, some level of creativity or site, you know, site specific trade offs in the zoning. So that's why we negotiate a specific text for that area, then that text now, the gap fillers may be our code when that text doesn't directly address something. But yeah, that text is really their code.
So, so then Tony, the, I think to get around to what you're getting to, right? If I, if, if what you're trying to get to is that the development should be on the same set of zoning codes as the rest of the village, we probably need to have some piece of legislation that then strikes the development text and replaces it with general village code, which doesn't seem impossible.
Well, if you look at, you know, we have our three, all the different districts, you know, ours residential three, R3, different business. And if you look under the planned residential district in our code, it doesn't say anything. It doesn't have the tax that, the planned residential tax in our code. You know, so I don't, so I guess my thing is, is if, if someone does something in new development that's against the code in the residential district, how do we cite them for something that's not in our code?
You can cite them for, I'm sorry Eric, you can cite them for a violation of the text. It applies just like the code. Remember that text, actually, if you were to consider, you know, ditching it for the code, there were upgraded standards that applied to that subdivision that you would lose the ability to enforce. So I, you know, I'd look at the pros and cons of ever going that way to see what, what you might gain and what you might lose. I hear the, you know, the, the idea that once it's built out, maybe it's good just to incorporate it into the larger village, just like everybody else. But I think there were some things in there that we may want to retain because they were sort of upgraded standards.
Maybe the, maybe a better way to say it is to review and reconcile, right? Update, update village codes where to, to the development text as appropriate. And then we can, once that reconciliation is done, we can, you know, no longer call that district.
Right, and some of the other things Tony, like, you know, property maintenance standards are still generally applicable. It would, it would be just the type of things you would find like in your residential district or R1s or R2s that their development standards in those particular chapters of the zoning code were replaced by much more detailed standards for the MI subdivision.
Well, I just, I think there's, I think there's something that we need to do. I'm not sure what that is, but there's something that we need to do in order to get, well, I guess to get the, the rules the way we'd like to have them. You know, because there's some, some people I think would like to have the same rules for everyone. But you know, there may be some instances where we need to have different rules for the element.
Sure.
And do the, how does the, the planning area then, that, that's not codified, right?
The, the development text?
Right.
It, um, it has the force of code, if that's the best way to put it, however. Yeah, I mean, it, it is its own standalone document. And, you know, we, if it is the zoning code for that subdivision, it should be known to all the residents over there either through their closing or we should make it, you know, obviously publicly accessible, but it is their zoning code and, and they should be able to put their fingers on it.
That, that makes it really, it certainly would be confusing for anybody. Look, you know, we've got, as you say on the website, we've got our codified ordinances, but it doesn't apply necessarily apply to, it's, it's hard to put it out there on a website so that, that a resident would even know to, to look for something different or to.
Well, that's what you're saying, if you look at our code. Our website.
It has a planned residential district.
To the document over the years, so, you know, we're almost to the final stretch here and, you know, after this change, you know, or, you know, we can put it up there.
I know we can put it up there. We, we think if we put it on the website, our ass is covered. I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about actually communicating with the residents so they can, they don't have to be a rocket scientist to, how do you know to, that it's there if you don't know where to look? It might as well not be there.
Only people, only people investigate what they want to do and they call us and we tell them. So I, if you want an individual notice and now to each residence that the code's now on the website, we can do that.
No, that isn't what she's saying, Eric. It's what we, there needs to be a better way to communicate the different rules for the different parts of the village. And you can go to the code, that's why I keep going back to this. The planned residential district in our code doesn't have anything in there, there's no.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's typical. You know, planned districts are used basically because you have a greater level of control in your negotiations with a specific developer, so that, that's why they become popular. Communities don't want to give away zoning unless they've got some ability to say, I don't want to get a pig in a poke. If you really want that good zoning, it's going to come with strings attached and here are the strings. So, uh, numerous planned districts are out there, probably the same issues come up with making sure those residents as people, as, as houses change hands, people need to, new, new residents coming in probably need to know there is a text. I don't know if we do a welcome packet or something like that, but yeah, at the end of the day, once it's built out, we need to continue either, either just somehow incorporate it into our code, which we could talk to the codifier about doing that. We could put it, they, they, you know, if, if we have a document like that, that we want to have incorporated by, you know, basically into a, an appendix of the zoning code, we can put it in there. I don't know that people really look at your codified ordinances or if it's just easier to sort of continually make sure that folks are aware, here's your text and here's what you have to comply with. Honestly, they don't want to read the whole development text anyway. We probably just need to have like a sheet, fact sheet of what applies in that subdivision.
And I keep saying this over and over again, if you look in our code, there's a, it.
It has a plan, it has, I understand what you're saying, Tony, it has a planned residential district after. But what that does is set up the skeleton and the process for a particular planned residential district to propose to you a text. And that text is not in the code itself, you're correct.
So I, I think, again, I, we, if we're looking for how to move forward, we need to, we need to, one, I, I think to, to Tony's concern, we could work with the codifier to get the text of the, of our planned residential district included into the codification, right? That would answer Tony's immediate concern. I think in a go-forward perspective, right? I think that it is, we are too small of a geographical area to enforce two different sets of codes. And we should look to go through a reconciliation process of, you know, this is what the village general code says about X. This is what the planned residential district says about X. How do we, you know, do we like one better than the other? How do we reconcile them? Come up with a single set of actual code and re-pass that. Because, you know, we have a hard enough time enforcing code as it is. And if we have two standards, it's just going to be impossible.
Right, and then maybe just do a plain English fact sheet of you live in the subdivision. Here's some, a couple of things you need to know about almost upgraded standards that unless we wipe them out, you still need to comply with. Architectural things, you know, that type of thing.
Absolutely, and to Tony and Diane's effect, and I'm sure I'm going to channel my inner Joe here, we do need to have our communications, you know, or some, some means of letting them easily access this information. I mean, I do agree with that. I, I've somewhat smarter than me will have the answer, I'm sure, but it, it seems like a good idea to have this kind of stuff easily available for the people who it would apply to.
Right, sometimes it's done, and as you guys know, we handle things a little differently. Sometimes it's done obviously through subdivisions homeowners association. We chose to say, we don't want a separate homeowners association, so that, that particular tool, the the typical communication tool doesn't exist here, so we probably need to substitute something for that.
We could throw a link up on our new website now that we have a lot more control over it.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
I just think that, you know, if we're going to be making, you know, these rules and these ordinances that carry the, the weight of governmental action, it's our responsibility that it should be as easily accessible as possible to our residents.
Sure makes, yeah, sure makes compliance easier, doesn't it?
Yeah, I, it's not, I, I, I don't think I'm hearing any disagreement, I'm just trying to voice what I think we're all trying to say in different ways.
By the way, on that ordinance and on a couple of the other pieces of legislation, this is Eric, if you're going to be in the office Monday, that they, they lack that the effect, effective date clause.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll get everything.
There's a couple of them, yeah, I just want to pass that along, that can be, while you're working on the other stuff Monday, throw some, you know, that this resolution, this ordinance is effective the earliest date permitted by law.
Got it, thanks.
Okay. Okay, so we should look, make sure that gets on there on Monday, earliest date permitted by law. You heard that, Mark?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um. Okay, so. So anything else, there's a third reading, okay, and the others are second, first and second readings. Okay. All right, we have a a number of outstanding items. We could, before we launch into some of those, I know we don't, let's see, let me make sure. Let me just double check that. No, I just want to make sure that Joe wasn't waiting in the wings and I had, okay, I'm ignoring him, so, okay, he's not, okay. So we have a number of things to review in terms of that or, or we could run through the committee notes quickly and then come back to our open items. Anybody care which way we do it? Okay.
All right, by the way, on the supplemental appropriation, before I forget this completely, for the police, has anybody checked to see if those type of expenses might be CARES Act reimbursable?
I wouldn't.
I don't, we, the mayor and I talked about that and I don't believe it had anything, it, it was because of the riots. It wasn't because of the COVID issue.
Except they probably had to take certain precautions during those.
At least or possibly a percentage of the costs may not. Although, I'm not sure what the, was the bill just for hours work though?
It's overtime or something, wasn't it?
Well, that's why we're going over.
If it wasn't for supplies or extra equipment or.
To my understanding, it was just for the overtime hours.
Okay.
There may be a second plug of CARES Act money coming if.
There is that, yeah, we got an email on that. They, they gave us an additional, what, thirty to thirty-three thousand dollars?
Yeah, it may be at least worth checking base with the folks to see if that, we can use that money potentially for that.
I mean, yeah, we may as well use, we may as well use it for whatever we can if it's authorized. I mean, it's not like, this money comes all the time.
Any expenses related to COVID that the police department incurred should be able to be billed to that CARES Act.
Okay. All right, so moving forward then, we have. I guess the first thing up is streets. I don't think uh, I don't think the mayor is on right now, Tiffany.
There's the probably a bad time. Do you have a question?
No, we just wanted to do a update on streets. I didn't know.
I can give you a quick version like really fast. Um, all, I mean, basically just all the projects are moving. I mean, the storm sewers. They're in the village, the sanitary sewers in the village, and then of course the east shore court you guys have in front of you. So there's really not much more to it than that. There's no, we've not had any anywhere near the complaints that we had last year with smells in the houses. Um, we've had a couple concerns of not knowing what it was, um, but other than that, it's actually gone very well in comparison. Um, we've had a resident that. Uh continually. Um monitors all of the work, so that's been, that's been a little bit of a challenge, but other than that, it's it's gone very well so far.
Okay. All right, I think that was uh, the only other thing was Jasmine and. Um, Jean, do you have any update on Jasmine market?
You're muted, Jean.
Yeah, I don't have any updates on Yasmin.
Yeah, no, unless uh we've received the final report um and I just haven't got a copy of it yet. I don't have any update. I would say about the sewer thing and the smell, I I spent two days living inside a bottle of nail polish remover from it, but I didn't really care. Which, by the way, is a pretty awesome product, project where they put a little like bag covered in resin in the old line and then run steam through it and the resin hardens and they just. Create a new pipe inside the old pipe. So I was okay with the smell.
Okay. Um, I don't think we have anything going on in communications except the uh, just that uh. Uh, the Becky has been on vacation, I think. Um, but she's continuing to try to move things over to the website. Um, I'm not aware of any other updates. In communication. And uh, community, I understand the pool is uh end of season closed for the season. Um, and I I don't know if there's any update on baby pool.
I've heard nothing, but um the mayor would be more in touch with the baby pool specifics than I regarding community. Um, regarding community with lakes, the only thing I know of is we're waiting on the um. Return of the sediment analysis. We can figure out where the stuff will be sent once we can get dredging going.
I guess.
Go ahead, Diane.
Um, I I want to add something else, but uh there there is, we just did get the uh. Quote to have someone help out with that was at a, because under a fall lake cleanup project. The two thousand dollars a day.
I believe, I believe um. I believe those were were referring to the same things, yes.
Well, there there's been a proposal turned in to clean up the. Logs and sticks or whatever limbs in the lake, and I think, you know, that's. Predicated on the the lake being lower. You know, I don't know that uh exactly what equipment like Diane, you were asking what they were. Uh proposing to use. I know the one uh. I talked to the mayor and she had said that 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 proposal was based on them being able to get to the. Uh or the water being lower so they could get to it because they came out and saw it at that time.
And looking at the reply from Brad, the guy that apparently we're in negotiations with. He did send back, we have chainsaws, canoes, and I expect we'll mostly use hip waders and ropes to pull most of the stuff out, so. Some of those questions have been answered in the latest update from Tiffany on that.
I didn't see that.
Yeah.
That's night.
Yeah, last night at like seven o'clock, so.
Yeah, I I cannot lie. I am currently working four days straight and I am just coming off day two, so I have not been as. Attentive as I would be in other parts of the week, but what you guys know, or what I know, you guys know at this point.
So I I I is, are we then looking to uh leave the valve open and uh hope that the. Water goes down one more time. To allow uh. This fall cleanup to happen?
That's the hope.
Yeah.
And it's all dependent on the rain, you know, like you say, rains, you know, get a good rain and it's filled up and overflowed like Mormon. We'll see what happens. I know that, you know, look on the Facebook page, a tree falls down and there's people wanting to know, what are you going to do about that? You know, and I think it just fell, you know. So there's a lot of people interested in getting the trees out of the lake, not just me.
What would it take to pump it? I mean, when we, when they did the dam work to keep it dry, there was a pump. How much is a pump and, right, I I it feels like uh, feels like we're not, we're not the. Neolithic man anymore, right? We have, we have tools available to us and someone.
You're absolutely right in that that, because the North Lake could easily be pumped out, and if you got a four inch pump, it'd pump it out in a couple hours.
Right.
Probably. So that's one of the things that I, I'm glad you brought it up because, you know, if you really wanted to clean that lake up, it's easy to pump that thing out when it gets. Partially low. Well, it's got to get low enough so that the water has some, it can go into the South Lake. Have to be at least that low.
Yeah, so so who uh, I mean.
I think when this, when it gets down again, and I talked about this with the mayor before about pumping the darn thing out. And you know, this time when it gets close, I think that's exactly what we're going to do. You know, because it doesn't cost, you know, it's a hundred bucks for a day to rent that pump.
I would be very supportive of that as well. I believe I overheard the tail end of these conversations, but I, yeah, that would be.
Now understanding how this, you know, when we open up the valve, what that means, how long it takes. That's why I've always wanted to. Open the valve to see exactly how it operates and how low it'll get and what we have to be able to do to drain it and. You know, we did, you know, I I'm, we missed an opportunity when it was down below and I'm sorry that that happened. But, you know, it's part of the process of understanding how we go about accomplishing the task there is to, you know, see how it works. I, you know, I had no idea that one rain would fill the thing right back up.
Yeah, no, knowing, no knowledge is bad to have.
Right, and you're, and we missed an opportunity, but now like Brian had said, the next time it gets like it was, we're, I'm going to get a pump. And we're going to get with the guy, whoever it is, that we're having clean that up and explain that to them.
Excellent. That is, that is wonderful. I think we will be well supported in the village to do so.
If I'm not mistaken, there is a different thing we can block or shut off to keep the North Lake from refilling from the water in the South Lake, right?
It's, i- isn't it the other way around, right? Because the North Lake gets a lot of storm water. And then it gets, it flows into the South Lake through the, through the pipe that goes underneath the lake road.
Times when the nor, when the, there's not that, because of our sewer, our storm sewer problems, the North Lake doesn't get as much water as it should right now. And what happens is the South Lake fills up and then it flows back under the road into the North Lake. So if we were, I guess what Mark's looking to, if there could be a, it would probably help if we blocked off the pipe underneath the road.
Yeah, because I mean, there's no reason to pump it out if you're just getting.
Right, right.
Refilled from.
The 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 hydrodynamics of our our lakes and draining it and and uh. You know, I think we've got a a a plan now in place.
Yeah, we've learned a ton this summer.
Yeah.
I fully concur with that. We've learned a ton this summer and no information is bad, so.
We're getting there.
This lake, this lake. This lake was not ruined and degraded in one day or one season. It won't be fixed in the same time, but the best we can do is the best we can do, and it seems like we're doing it. So.
All right, then.
I think that's it for community.
All right. As finance, uh. Uh, I the, I didn't have a chance to look at the fiscal other August report, but I guess it uh. Kim sent it, so that's to to take a look at um. Uh. So I saw that the levy was communicated in the village. Uh, it's just in a little bitty box. Um. I hope we are going to do some other communication for that because that that's not certainly not going to. Uh, what is your, what's everyone's opinion? Are people going to, because a lot of people just you can communicate, you got to do a lot of communication with people to actually. Have it sink in, so and and you can start, you know, absentee uh balloting started. Um, so are we going to have people that are are not going to be aware? They're going to. Uh, look at the ballot and say, hey, here's Manava Park on here for this uh levy and uh renewal and um. Well, I don't think I'll vote for that, you know. I mean, are we going to have that or?
I assume there are laws with regards to how we can.
We can't promote a levy or we, as a, from the village's standpoint.
What I meant.
Yeah, there's. Absolutely. You can, you cannot advocate. Go ahead, Tony.
Yeah, go, you go ahead.
Okay, you you can't advocate for a position one way or the other, but you can put out informational, strictly informational uh. Uh, documents.
Right, but it's it's within informational to give information like. Uh, you know, this is the percent of the village's budget that's represented. These are, you know, it goes to the general fund, which pays for these things.
Right.
That is, that is all informational, and I think that is um, you know.
Yes.
Probably enough.
Yeah, we don't want to ourselves a foul of election law.
Yeah.
I think it's important to do an informational mail or postcard, something. Um, but I I guess that is is ultimately up to the uh administration. But I I would, and I don't know where Tiffany is right now. Are you on Tiffany?
Come on, um, we've put it in the newsletter. Again, it it's entirely up to you guys what you guys want to spend the money on. So if you guys want to do an informational.
And this is our, what what happens if this doesn't pass? I mean, come on. This is the big chunk of the uh operating budget. Isn't it?
It's not a big chunk. This is one of five of our operating budget that goes into it, but I don't want to say. So it would be a great thing if it didn't pass, but I don't think we're doing anything any different than what we've done in the past. So putting it in the newsletter is as good as it typically gets. Um, if somebody has an idea, somebody wants, I mean, I've never received a a new, I've never received a postcard. I've never received anything. From the village about anything except for the income tax increase um in two thousand fifteen that was left on my front porch. So I don't believe we've done anything any different. It gets put in the newsletter. Um, this is something that, you know, you got, again, if communication wants to get involved and communication says, let's do this or. You know, if finance wants to say, look, we need to make sure that we're pushing this, you guys, it it, tell me. Um, you guys want to do a postcard? You guys want to spend five or six hundred dollars to mail out a postcard to everybody? I'm I'm on board. Um, I'm not just going to go spend six hundred dollars on a postcard if I don't have council saying I think that we need to do this when it's never been done before. So I I am not in disagreement. I think it's very important that we get the message out. I think it's very important. But again, I think the first thing that people do is they say, well, the administration needs to decide if they want to do this. Well, you know, it would be nice to have a little bit of. Um, hey, let's do this. Hey, let's do this from some of council. So, you know, it's something that, again, it's six hundred dollars. I'm not sure, five, six hundred dollars to do a postcard. I'm not even sure that I have. That sitting in somewhere to being able to send it. So, you know, we have enough in our newsletter budget, but I don't know that we just have another, you know, whatever for me to sign off on something like that. So. With all of our funds being messed up, we have a shortage in a lot of our funds that every single time we go to do something, we realize I can't even do it. So we are still working through that. Um, unfortunately, it's it's a day at a time. But I'm open for suggestions. You know, I I'm hearing disappointment that we haven't done more and I'm not hearing that anybody has ever even brought this up yet. So I I I, you know, that's, it's entirely up to you guys. I have no issues um spending a little bit of money to promote it. But we've never done that in the past, that I'm aware of.
I don't believe. Advertising mechanisms that, I don't know that a postcard is necessary. I think the people that are, you know, putting it on Facebook and. And the newsletters and and people talking amongst their neighbors. I mean, everyone's going to. Know what this is about, or I would say everyone, the people that go and vote. I would like to think know.
I would, I would personally just suggest doing some sort of informational postcard. Hey, this blah 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 will. Generate X amount of dollars and this is a renewal, not a new thing and.
Yeah, your taxes will not change.
And in fact, actually, they'll go down because we're losing one of the the small one and this is where that money goes. And if we worry about saving money, we can perhaps ask, I know MPCA has been working hard to get. Uh, I think they call them street captains or what have you, so that each street has a person and they've been wanting to utilize that system for, you know. Handing out flyers about MPCA events where Joe on Alta Vista gets a stack of twenty and he has to drop them on all of. Alta Vista's porches. And that might be, we might want to say, hey, could you guys test that system and hand out these little cards for us? And that. Takes the cost of the postcard down since we won't be spending fifty.
Me, it sounds like a conversation for the communications committee.
Well, that, all right, so that MPCA, that's the dividing line between MPCA and the village that they wanted to keep separate, so.
Okay. Maybe the response would be, no, we don't want to get involved in that, but.
So I I think if we could, so Tiffany, if you could know on Monday whether or not you have the money to spend on a, on a. Appropriated to spend on a on a postcard, then we could bring this back up again Monday night because. You know, we could want a postcard all we want, but if the money isn't appropriated, there's more steps to it, right? If there is the money, then we can add that to. Uh, we can schedule a communications committee meeting that can then make some decisions and formulate said postcard. Uh, if if the appetite is there. Does that sound fair?
Works for me.
Sounds good.
It sounds like the appetite kind of is there because.
Well, I agree.
I mean, this is my first, this is my first election season, but I'm, it sounds like it makes sense.
I'm I'm also not opposed to putting flyers on on mailboxes the way we've done it in the past. If it's, you know, if we have. A hundred and fifty dollars to print things, but we don't have the other four hundred dollars to mail things. I I've put flyers on every mailbox in the village before. I'm sure I'll do it again in the future, right? That's not a, that's not an unpossible task.
And I I I'm going to say this, I will not speak for MPCA, but I think that they would be more than happy to put a flyer on somebody's door for us. Um, again, won't speak for them, but I I I can't imagine that they wouldn't. But, and again, we could offer, I would offer to help assist as well, so. Um, I have no problem doing it either direction. I think everybody knows that. So, you know, if if you guys have any ideas like this, definitely bring them up. Tell me. I have no issue. Either direction. So I will let you guys know Monday how much I think that we have available and then make a decision based on that.
Yeah, and even if MPCA isn't willing to do it, do it. I imagine some of the people who often volunteer aren't okay with it.
Correct.
So, you know. Various people, and I can't think, I can't pull names right now, um, who are often seem putting things on mailboxes. They'll probably volunteer for this too.
All right, so um, moving on then, I think we're ready. Uh, so. And finance is also the uh facility. And um, we did um. We did get the additional information. Eric uh emailed the additional information about. Uh, that we had on the two facilities, uh two architects in terms of their fee schedule. Did everybody have a chance to look at that?
The architecture, absolutely, yeah.
So what are, can we just go around and say what your thoughts are about these two architectural firms or making a decision? Uh, to move forward or not? You want to, Brian, you want to start?
Sure, I might, my. Sure, my, my preference is still with the group that we met with first. The names are confused in my head, but Gorman Miller.
Gorman, yeah.
The one, the one that had a, you know, a much more thorough and organized presentation.
Okay, Mark?
Um, yeah, I could go either way. I think I still like Gorman Miller a little better because they have everything in-house. That's my sort of deciding vote on it, although the other one seems pretty capable as well. I would not have an issue. I don't, I don't have a huge strong way on either one. It's not like one of these, I said, oh, they're terrible. Let's not work with them.
What did your, was it your dad or somebody you had, who were they in favor?
He put it down to those two. He said, and, and, and the big reason was, he said, you know, H and K or Gorman Miller, everything in-house, and you really want that because then you, you're only going one place. And then he looked at H and K and said, they've done a lot of projects with some finicky, tough people to work with and have done repeat projects with them. So that kind of shows a people have been happy with them. Like in particular, we work with OSU who has all kinds of crazy requirements for work and that sort of thing.
Tony?
I, well, I like, like Mark, I'm, I could go either way, but I think by to pick one, it'd be Gorman Miller.
Any particular reason why for you?
For them, it just, well, it just seems like a smaller, more intimate group. You know, and, and all of the large projects that the other company has taken on. I, I don't know, I, I, I just look at them as being extremely, are gonna be more expensive is my thought on that. But that's about it.
David?
Much like Councilman Bruegger, I felt that they both sound good. However, I was very much more so impressed with Gorman Miller. Horn and King looked much better on paper. Maybe Zoom just isn't their thing. I'm not gonna fault them for that. That being said, Gorman Miller is my choice as well because I like the in-house. Whereas Horn and King, the biggest issue I see is them outsourcing so many things. It's almost like they're not exactly an architecture firm as much as a a middleman to build us a building.
I think that's what both of the companies are, but more so that way.
Right. They are, yeah, the architects is kind of like the project manager then as you go forward.
Yeah, so you know, with, with no malice at all, no malice at all towards Horn and King, I would prefer Gorman Miller be with us on this project.
Okay, alright. Eric, do you want to weigh in since you're on the line?
Oh, thank you. Both good firms. I can speak to that on, you know, on a public level. I've worked with Horn and King on, you know, two projects, one in Powell and one in Patasko. They're good, good company. You know, that said, I, I'm, again, these are both capable firms and I think just the only thing I will point out is on these, Mr. King has maintained a smaller house, so to speak. He's a little more nimble and that's, it's not unusual in these projects, even when I do projects on the private side and coordinate between engineers and architects. It's, it's not unusual to use people that, you know, are not in-house. And so it, it's just how that team works together. And typically what architects do, who don't have an engineer in houses, they already have a couple of firms that they have, you know, an excellent relationship with. So there's no, there's no issues of communication and everybody, you know, can work together as a team, just as if they were in the same building. It's typically how it runs out there and, you know. Gene's seen many more projects than I have and probably can speak to something similar and I'll let him do if you still wanted to hear from him.
My input would be, yeah, my input would be good process. I mean, I respect the process and you guys have come up with two good candidates. I don't think you can go wrong either way. The portfolio both have done a public side projects would show that they both have both the, you know, the expertise, architectural type of expertise to bring you a good project and the competence beyond just the design part of it to pull it off and, and take a project from beginning to end. So I respect the process. I'd, I'd encourage you guys to make the choice, you know, just based on the information that they provided to you. I don't think you can go wrong.
Okay. So thank you, Gene. In terms of, I like them both. I did check with, you know, Beth from our committee who's an architect. She has worked with both. And I shared the, the fee schedule to her as well. She was actually excited that Horn and King was lower. Obviously as smaller as Eric used to term more nimble company. You know, the thing that, that I see that Horn and King can bring is that because being smaller, the owner would be very much involved in the entire process. There's advantages to that. And you know, given the fact, the thing that we don't know is give, you know, we're going to be, we're, you know, being a municipality, a small one with all of our different personalities and opinions. We're going to be a challenge to work with and, you know, having the right mesh in terms of personalities and their ability to navigate our processes is going to be important too, to move the thing along. But still, I think they both could do it. I would lean toward, I, I, I would not be opposed to Gorman, but I would lean towards Horn and King because I've always enjoyed working with smaller, more entrepreneurial companies all my life. And so that's something that I'm more familiar with. So, and I know there's, but there is advantages to that as well. And, but that's just something that, that I found more enjoyable, but I would go either way as well. So we've gone around and given our opinions. So I think that I guess the next step is to actually, is this a resolution, Gene, to move forward with certain contract negotiations with an architect?
Well, once you select one of the suitors, we just get in, you know, that I'm sure they have a standard contract. We'll get them to send it over and review it and then get it on council agenda. Any contract of, you know, that magnitude that ilk has to come before council, absolutely.
So we can probably get a resolution on, for Monday, the first reading to, to pick the architect and, and request contract negotiation. So we really kind, it's, it seems like the majority is Gorman Miller is, so is that?
That's my count.
Final solution is final decision? And we'll put that on the, if anybody before Monday evening, or even on Monday, it's a first reading. So if anybody has any second thoughts, but we'll go ahead and I'll write, I'll, I could work something up for the first reading on Monday. And our resolution and we'll go from there. Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Wow. Okay, so moving on. Barmy?
I said more progress.
Shocking. Okay. I, Tiffany, do you want to talk about baby pool? I just wanted to, I looked back up there and we didn't get a status on that. Okay, she must not be available. Okay. Alright, moving on. Is there any update on safety?
Our big issue remains the EMS negotiations with Columbus, which I don't, I know I haven't heard anything, which means I'm assuming the village administration and I see Gene shaking his head, so I'm guessing he hasn't heard anything. So there's that. I will admit freely that I failed to get a meeting scheduled the second half of last month, so on Monday with all of the constituent people on hand, we'll schedule something for the, the first, you know, as soon as possible because we have to finish up some discussion we had on on some speed monitoring devices and then, and playground rules and then Facebook. We just had a minor eruption of people talking about parking at intersections. So we'll have a, a discussion on that as well.
Seems to be a problem, especially, oh, what's the road that the model home was on?
Black Sycamore, Black Sycamore and Quiet, and Quiet, Quiet Brookvale. Yeah, right there at that corner. There seems to be people who have a habit of parking right at it. And it was funny because we, we had just gone, it was the day that we had a food truck by the, by the community building and my household had driven over there to pick up our stuff and we just, we just nearly had an accident there because we couldn't see because there were cars parked at that corner. So you didn't have your triangle sightline. And, you know, it was still bad on our way back. And just as we passed it the second time, the post on Facebook was, you know, we gotta do something about that intersection. And and then I made, I made the bad, I made the bad choice of responding that it would be addressed or talked about in a community in a meeting. And then, you know, everybody chimed in with all of their intersections that they feel are a problem. So, so, so now, now we, now we'll have to follow up and discuss all those. You know, my, my suspicion will be, you know, buying a whole bunch of no parking from here to the intersection signs and getting them planted.
Yeah, and some of it is construction. They're still, they're still finishing a couple of those corner houses down there. So there's a fair amount of dumpsters and big trucks there too. That'll be in a month when we're done.
I, I think a general policy about, you know, how close to the intersection you can be parking is, is probably smart, right? Two, a couple of years ago, a couple of years ago, we, we got tight on, you know, making people trim bushes at, at corners so that you could see and you know, I think the next logical step is getting, getting tight on how close you can park so people can see.
I definitely think some signs saying no parking here till corner are absolutely needed, cheap, well, not necessarily cheap because those signs are ridiculously expensive apparently. But hey, people gotta eat, so sign makers have to eat too. Yep. After all, it is a piece of metal with some paint on it.
Very fancy paint. Yeah, but that's it for, for safety at the moment.
Okay. Anyone have anything for, anything else on safety?
I am, well, this isn't about safety, but I'm gonna have to head off and get some for tonight. Is there anything else that anybody would like to tell me or ask me about?
Well, one of the things that we're going to, we're, we're discussing the HVAC and we're discussing the cement something, cement steps for the back. And I don't know, do you have any feedback for us on that? Any of those?
Well, I mean, the HVAC, let's, you know, let's get it fixed to best extent we can because the CARES Act should very likely take care of that. And let's, I mean, if we have an officer who is injured, then it needs the staircase improved, that's something that we should do as well. And even if that place will be, you know, taken apart or modified in upcoming upcoming renovations, that still wouldn't break the bank. So I would be in favor of both of those things going through to the most financially prudent and effective extents possible, if that helps.
Okay, get some sleep.
Yep, night, or night three or four starts at 7 p.m. tonight.
Okay.
Talk to you guys later.
Bye. Alright. Okay, so legislation is next. We already talked about the sidewalk code Eric is going to be submitting. Is there anything else for legislation? Mark?
Not that we haven't already gone over at the top there.
Okay. Alright, so then let's get to the laundry list. Outstanding items. Let's see. We, I guess we had this outstanding Mud Rutgers lake quote. I'm assuming that's just continuing to be on hold.
I'd like it to move forward. I mean, I, I understand some concerns that it's not going to be an effective way to do it, but I would like to give it a try and be able to know for sure. And if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. And we could say, okay, that's not going to work. And if it does work, great, we can.
Well, let me, we had a meeting with the, was it Metropolitan, you know, the, the company that's put together a dredging project? And it was his recommendation not to do hydraulic dredging.
Right. He wasn't, he wasn't into that. I, I think they, I, I believe Tiffany's not on here right now. Tiffany and Joe were working on this one, but the Mud Rutgers had a cancellation and a window of time that they needed to fill a project. And I'm pretty sure we missed that window. But I just didn't know if anybody else had any information, but I think it, because it was a pilot project, they were gonna try it and but they, but, you know, Joe had not ident, Joe had not identified a place to put this inner tube for the stuff to dry out. And he had even talked about dumping it into a ravine, which I would be totally opposed to personally because, I mean, a ravine is a ravine because gosh, water goes down there and, you know, that's why it got to be a ravine. And why would you put more muck down there that there would then be trapped open? Anyway. So I, I think perhaps it's gonna be a dead issue anyhow, because I, I just, I think we missed the window to fill in their for their cancellation. So if no one else has any other information about it, we'll let that go for now. Maybe Tiffany, if she comes back on, can speak to that. So going to the HVAC quote. We got the updated information from both of them. So they both, I, I, I had not, I've not met the Atlas people, I have to say that, but I did find the federal lead just so that there could be a comparison between the approach that the two were taking. And of course, Joe's not on, but his point was, he felt like we needed to get an engineer involved to determine what exactly the building needed. And normally, you know, for, where the size of the building is, I thought that was kind of like nuking gnats or, you know, it's what we used to call making a making a big deal out of something small. So, but anyway, in terms of federal, I'll just speak for them because I can only speak for them. And I, I really, the guy was great. I really liked him. He seemed to be, I think they would do a great job. They are more expensive, but they did talk about, they did talk about, you know, getting it right. They've done a lot of municipalities. They've done a lot of old buildings, which I like. He didn't flinch at all when he was walking through the building. He didn't express shock or dismay at the equipment. It was just like he went through and I was like, okay, whatever. And, you know, he went with it. The fresh air, he had no problem drilling through the concrete like the Atlas was pushing back on. He had no problem with any of that. Also, you know, he wanted, was willing to do the, understood that he should do a little extra duck work. So he didn't at first eliminated from even a suggestion which Atlas did. And then I like the fact that he also wanted to put the, which, which I, I guess I suggested was, you know, having the newer HVAC equipment without having new thermostats didn't make any sense to me. Programmable thermostats that were gonna regulate it. But Atlas still excluded it. But Atlas still excluded it in its updated bid, but federal has it in there, so the, those are the only comments I'm able to make based on discussions we had.
This is the federal, the federal bid for eighteen five five.
Yep.
And they wanna do exterior duck work to get fresh air in, which is what we were worried about Atlas not doing.
Right, Atlas came back though with it, Atlas came back with an upgraded bid where they did add the fresh air.
And what, what is that number from Atlas with the exterior air brought in?
Three thousand less.
Thirty-five hundred less. I, I don't wanna sound, I don't know, I don't care. We're spending CARES Act money on this, let's spend the extra three grand and get the nice system.
Well, we don't know that we're spending CARES Act money yet.
The only thing I'll point out on both of these, and Diane, correct me if I'm wrong, the actual equipment is very similar, eighty percent efficiency on both of the systems. There is a three thousand dollar difference, so if we're talking about adding additional touchscreen thermostats and this and that, I'm sure that could easily be covered in the three grand. But as far, you know, the thing that I'm gonna point out to everybody is, you know, the, it is a big difference. You know, the original discussion of doing this was for great reason and being able to use the CARES Act money in improving our airflow and flu- you know, improving the air quality in the building. I will, and Diane will attest to this, we are still getting pushed back from one particular person that it's still not good enough. That is, that's all I'm gonna say about that. And, but three thousand dollars is a lot of money in the event that the CARES Act money doesn't pay for it, and I just want everybody to remember that. We can have Atlas Butler include some additional things, but not because I want Atlas Butler to do it, because honestly, I, I just want to be able to get back into the building and have the best that we can possibly get. But don't bank on the fact that CARES Act money is gonna do it. If we need to have Atlas Butler doing apples to apples and see what the price is, that's what we're doing. I mean, I feel like we're poo-pooing on a three thousand dollar difference, but three thousand dollars would actually pay for our flyers, you know, pay for all these other things that we're talking about. Again, I don't have a preference, but, you know, three thousand dollars is a lot of money. And we're taking a higher price for what? If the equipment is similar. And I'm understanding that the, the equipment is the same. Very similar to the same, both eighty percent efficiency, both, the only, the only big difference that I was able to come up with was, one, didn't have the additional pant, the addition, the newer updated thermostats, and thermostats aren't three grand, no way.
I was still working on the assumption that Atlas, well, didn't include bringing outside air in, so that also was covering my judgment.
Oh, no, and, and it's something that, it's something that if people wanna look a little bit more, this is also, we don't have to do this until December, so this is also one of those things that I don't feel like, I feel like we needed to do it yesterday, except for the fact that we do have time on this. I mean, it's something, if you guys have questions, we can, you know, and Diane helped, and the guy from federal, she is correct, he was amazing, he's great. I think that they would do an amazing job and I have no issue with that company whatsoever. So if everybody's on board and they just wanna put legislation to move forward with that one, knowing it's a three thousand dollar difference, that's fine. So, I'm not here to, to nay say either one of them, I just wanna make sure that if you guys have additional questions, we do have some time, we don't have to have first reading Monday. We have a little bit of time, let's rephrase that, you know, we're, it has to be done before December.
My thing on it, going with Atlas price, because, you know, these things we're talking about with thermostats, you know, this building's gonna get remodeled.
Yeah.
Very soon, so the important thing is that, that the equipment, you know, the, the units are this, are of comparable quality, you know, because those things can definitely be reused. It's, you know, things like thermostats and, and even ductwork may have to be redone when, when the, when the building's remodeled.
I, I agree with that, I also think that we can move forward with a, with a first reading, right, because we don't need a vendor on, on a first reading. Right, we can just, you know, the first reading is a, hey, we are, we are doing something with the HVAC here. Right, and, and, and that's a first reading, and then we can have a second reading, you know, and maybe have a, a more solidified idea and get a contractor or a vendor in in the second reading. Have that and then our first meeting in October, get this, get this done.
Well, I kinda screwed you up on that, because if you remember, right, we already did the first reading on Atlas Butler before, before we had a councilperson very disappointed with that option, so that's when we brought in another one, thank you Diane, because again, it was great.
Well, we can, we can either start fresh with a new, new piece of legislation with no vendor, or we can, we can scratch it and or, yeah, right, I, I don't think there's anything, any problem with just starting with a new, a new resolution on Monday with, without a vendor, right?
We can just put a blank in, yeah.
Yeah. A new resolution. The other one we can, did we table the other one, or? I think.
No, it's up for a second reading on Monday.
So do we need a motion to, to, to take it away, or do we just let it die on the vine and never read it again? I don't know that I've been in that situation before.
E, 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 either one, you can have a motion to withdraw, or you can just do three readings and nobody moves to pass.
I think we, so if we could add to Monday's council agenda, a motion to withdraw.
But I guess the next question is, are we withdrawing that one? Have we made a decision, or do we just table it until we make the decision? Because we've already got one reading done if we end up with Atlas Butler.
Sure, then, all of that together, I think tabling is fine, in my opinion.
Now that I know Atlas is doing the fresh air and stuff, now that I know they're doing essentially the same thing, I'm leaning towards Atlas anyway, so.
I think, you know.
First reading was Atlas is okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm actually fine with Atlas as well, if they're, if they're less expensive and they're bringing in fresh air. That's, that's my.
They have, the Atlas group, I would just like to, if, if that's true, I'd just like to do a, the Atlas talked about having a manual damper and I don't think that for the fresh air, so that you, you're in charge of changing the quantity yourself. I don't think that's the case with the but, so I think I, I just like to, there's a couple of things I'd like to follow up on, but the other thing we could do is you know, if we, if we just table this, so that we can pick up where we left off. You know, if we agree on a, once we do the reading for the architect and getting a contract together, what we, what we might do, I wouldn't be afraid to do this, I don't know, is just to contact the architect that we're going to have the readings on. Let, let them know that we're going to be doing the readings and then ask them if they have an opinion on the HVAC, if they'd like to share with us. Just, just to see what they would have to say about our approach on this.
Only if you can get it done within the next two weeks and you get a contractor, because you're, you're, unless you're gonna pass something as an emergency, and I don't think this is an I don't think this is a good one to pass as an emergency, in my opinion, or wait the readings, and that's, again, just my opinion. You're, you're gonna be on borrowed time, December is right around the corner, and it basically takes two months, so you're already in September, so I, I don't know, I mean, it's a great, a great idea, I don't disagree with it. It just depends on how fast you're gonna pick one.
Right. Okay, I, I don't, I, I just wanna make sure that we're I wanna make sure we know what we're, as much as we can, what we're getting, I'm not an expert in HVAC, but, I mean, and we're not talking about a, a huge building here. But I, there's just still a couple of things that are bothering me about the quote, so. Anyway, but I underst- understand we wanna move this along, so, all right. That's it, HVAC. So we have, on the list of open items, we just have the, oh, the basketball court, the is that, that's for the safety committee, right, in terms of rules?
Yeah.
Anything else on that basketball court, any?
The signs for park closes at dusk or whenever are up, so.
Oh, they're up?
Yes, they are.
Oh, great.
It says court or whatever closes at, I can't remember if it's dusk or dark or. But yeah, that's up there.
Great.
As someone who lives with, you know, can stand in my front yard and see it, but, you know, other than people still leaving water bottles, but, you know.
It is what it is.
I've watched enough of those like Survivor shows to know the, the little, you know, man versus wild and stuff that you know, you can, they can drop you on a deserted island in the South Pacific and within two hours, the guy can find six water bottles, water bottles on the beach to, to put things in.
Okay. The, do we have any, any other updates from the MI meeting? We have on the twenty-fourth in terms of their punch list.
I can tell you, I went and looked at that pile of dirt that I've been talking about and would be the southwest corner of the development and and those guys described it as a buffer mound. It's not a buffer mound, it's a big pile of dirt, it's gonna be a pain in the butt to maintain. And if, I think they need to get a bulldozer out there and, and make it into a buffer mound, instead of a pile of dirt.
Southwest.
The south, over, like, yeah, the very southwest corner of the development. Back where the, there's a little road that goes back to the old sewer treatment plant. You know, if you've been back over there. It's, what it is, is a pile of dirt that was left over when they graded the, the lots and they went and threw some straw on top of it, they didn't do any grading. And again, I think, you know, it needs to be removed, or not removed, but created into a, into a mound that's easier to, to cut, and it just, it doesn't look right there.
Okay.
You know what I'm talking, it's right by your house, or I wouldn't say right by your house, but.
Yeah, that's a good walk over there.
Yeah.
So before the next meeting, you're gonna have an updated list, I will add this obviously with the location on the map, I will get you some additional documented photos. And, you know, obviously, this is something that can be addressed before, you know, you should see the legislation on the next meeting anyways for first reading, so it'll be prime time for you to go through and say, great, we've seen all this, this we're not happy with, and we communicated to MI and, you know, we'll work that out.
Well, and then there was the issues with, with below the dam, I mean, he, well, I don't, I forget the guy's name, but he was alluding to, that was already accepted. It's a issue with EM, EM.
H and T.
Empty.
Yeah.
You know, but those are, to me, the biggest things that we need to, we need to to get an understanding about if they're gonna do anything.
Yeah, understandable with the dam and I, I received the information for the M H and T engineer and I'm gonna talk with him and then we can get some information back to you and go from there.
Alrighty.
So Eric, Eric is on that one, okay. H T, okay. All right. Oh, let's, I, I think, except for any committee meeting dates, does anyone announcing any particular date for any committee meetings at this time?
I'm not ready.
Streets is gonna be mid-octo, or, sorry, I think we started talking at the same time. Streets is gonna be mid-October per, per Mike Flickinger. Mid-October, the reason that we picked mid-October is that's gonna be the date in which we should have, we're hoping to be able to get the survey, again, that's the reason that we really wanted to get that survey done. We're hoping to be able to talk about East Shore Court project a little bit more and a couple other items. As, including Yasmin Market and some, all of that kinda stuff, so I had asked Mike when he could come and go over all of that, and he said mid-October to late October, so just as an FYI, Streets, we're just kinda waiting for him.
Okay.
The only thing I was gonna say is the legislative, and I need to, I think, convey this to our, our meeting scheduler person, I'm probably gonna move that legislative to six instead of six thirty, like I've done in the past. I think, I, I think it was always six thirty, because it was just kind of convenient to show up, have it, and then go right into council. With us not having to walk to the building and walk home, I just, I like starting it at six to make sure you have an hour just in case. And when you get done in forty minutes instead of an hour, it gives everyone twenty minutes before they have to log on to the next meeting. So, that's the only change I have.
Okay.
Good, I prefer that. Because some reason the computer locks up when we're going live, when we do it that fast.
Yeah.
So it works perfect.
Okay. And Tiffany, I'll send out a, for a finance meeting. We can ask, or do you, would you like to, or should I ask Kim when she's a bit, what date she might be available, I know she wants four, four thirty.
Yeah, I can send her a message and get a couple of options, that way you guys can compare, and I can have, I should be able to have that for you by Monday.
Okay.
That way we can get that scheduled. I'll let you guys continue and then I'll give you like my three or four minor little updates.
Well, I think the next thing we wanted to talk about was the the behind the building stairs or whatever, I, I somehow, I missed that email that had an explanation, there was a pricing on there, but did other people see that and wanna comment on it? Anybody wanna comment on the stairs in the back?
But, I think, yeah, we should just do it, I, I don't know that this is a, you know.
I mean, there's the stairs in the back, I know the, the wooden stairs in the back are rotted, but I wouldn't wanna, I just, some Tiffany had mentioned concrete or something, and I just, I didn't wanna, I don't think we should do anything that's better than making it safe, if it's replacing it with another wooden structure, whatever would be the least expensive way to get it done right now. Knowing that, you know, this could all change or over the year.
Right, but everything we do is, the, in, I'm just gonna make my one little comment, and everybody knows what I'm probably about to say is that's why we're in the position that we're currently in, and I understand that the building structure could eventually change. It also could not eventually change, and everything that we do, and it's actually been brought up a couple times just today, is, you know, for the last two or three years, we've talked about, you know, well, what if when the new building, what if when the new building, if we continue to say what if when the new building, the building is gonna end up being like lakes like it already is. So, every project that we talk about is like that, which it needs to be, don't get me wrong. But, and, and I'm not in disagreement with wood stairs and just doing the concrete path. But, again, it's going to deteriorate within a couple of years, and you're gonna redo it again, like we're continually doing.
Well, I.
Problem is, if it's not being maintained, I mean, we are to the point they're about to collapse, I mean, it's, it's horrible.
I, I think that, yeah, this probably should have been taken care of like many other things before. I am just saying that, that if you, whatever is the most economical way to, especially if it, if it's something that's, most economical way to do it, and I don't know, you're, so, so since I didn't see the document, because somebody told me what the stairs, what, what's the deal for the stairs?
Basically, it's the, it's all of it, it's the stairs and the walkway to get to the police department. So right now, right now.
What's the quote for, what is the quote for, how much is it and what's it for?
It's attached to one of the, I don't, it's like seven thousand something, does anybody know off the top of their head? I attached it to an email that talks about, it's in the email that, the only email I sent that has the discussion about the stairs with the pictures, I attached it with the pictures of what we're talking about and the replacement of it. It's seven thousand, there's two, there's actually two sections of that, because the other question was, how much would it be to get a wheelchair type ramp down there? So when we brought him in, we had asked about, instead of doing stairs, to just doing a ramp. But because of the grade, it is absolutely impossible to do that there. You would have to take the ramp all the way out around the shed and back down. And there is a price for that, not that anybody wants to do that right now, but there is also a price for that as well.
Well, I didn't realize it was that high, I haven't seen.
Oh, yeah, it's to do stairs and to do the, to do the walkway.
Well, then that's where I'm gonna have to say, whoa, ho, ho, ho.
Yeah. So, yeah, we can just do wooden stair, I mean, we can do wooden stairs and, you know, just replace it again in a So yeah, we can just do a wooden stair, I mean, we can do wooden stairs and, uh, you know, just replace it again in a couple of years. Um, and then.
Well, that's not, if it's done properly, that isn't necessarily the case and you know.
Well, we've done ours properly and I will tell you, we've been there just a very short amount of time and we've done ours twice. Because it's sitting right, they, I mean, and it's, we've used treated wood, so it just, in the weather.
At seven thousand dollars, I could go over there and do something a heck of a lot cheaper than that, it would last.
Right, well, again, it's concrete, so if you, again, you can do the walkway.
That's my, that's my point about concrete, I just don't, I, if it's, if it's, if it's, it should be good quality wood is, I, it's good quality job and I, if that means it only, I, I've kind of puzzled that it only lasts a couple of years, but I don't, I don't have one, so I don't have the experience. Uh, I just think wood structure would be less expensive, but not cheap, you know, not, not something that's going to fall apart in six months, but.
Yeah, and I don't know whether, whether or whether we get behind that building, but I would also be more in favor of just what stairs that's, you know, it might be something that gets taken out and replaced and hopefully a year, year and a half when we finally, I mean, we're moving forward with the architects, we've, we, we are going to do a remodel of that building, it is going to happen and I don't know that we need concrete stairs there that may or may not just get popped out.
Right, I, I'll go take a look at it today and see what, you know, because this is really, I wouldn't say just because of a, you know, a temporary situation that they have to have the stairs.
No, it is, it's absolutely not for a temporary situation, this was actually done and, and Brian, you may be able to attest to this. This prod, this project was being done, they had it already ready to be done and then when they started, when we really got into the building, um, the two nine nine, they stopped it, this was absolutely being done. Don't, um, don't take my word for it, chief, you know, the people in the building, this was ready to be done.
Well, I'm.
Before this happened.
Urgency now is because of someone that, I mean.
No, it's not, no, the, no, Tony, the urgency is if you look at it, it's rotten, so it's not safe to be on those stairs right now.
Well, but, but my point, you got the front steps, you know, there, there was many, those steps have only been there for a couple of years, there never were steps there before.
Okay.
I mean, that's.
Right, but the problem is, is it's a lot easier for somebody on crutches to go down four steps than to go down an entire flight of stairs.
I get that.
Yeah, but I, but I can testify that it can be done, so.
I'm not going to say that it can't be done, but once again, we're talking about putting people at risk falling down stairs that are on crutches. And we're act, we're actually talking about this, like, it's, it's not, I mean, I, I can't even believe we're talking about that. It's okay to go down a flight of stairs because, you know, never mind, I, I'll just stop right there.
You know, the thing is, is this, when we had the, we've had the discussion about, I, I can't tell you the number of people like, you know, when we had the discussion about the facility and people didn't want to make, didn't think it was a big deal to have it be accessible, I mean, this is, shouldn't be a shocking conversation, there's a lot of people who are like, well, why, if you, if you're a police officer, you, you have to be able bodied just like an EMS person because you couldn't hold on a job if you were, you know, now we are allowing our police officer who can, apparently can't be on to, to do paperwork in the office or do something else, I, I assume this is a staffing issue. Uh, but, uh, so, so our assumption that only an able-bodied person would be working uh, in that situation was incorrect and, uh, for, you know, and that was, that's an administrative decision now in some business, some businesses, that would be a different decision, but that's, that's the administration's decision.
Okay, whoa, 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 what are we talking about? I, I, I mean, what are, what are, what did, what is the administration?
In terms of the access, in terms of, uh, you know, have, if, if, uh, anyway, this, nevermind, it's philosophical.
No, I actually do want to hear this, so you think that I should tell an employee that he needs to stay home for four weeks because he broke his foot?
I think if a police officer cannot do their job and we do, any, in any, I don't know, maybe police have different roles, but in, in the working world, if you can't do your job and there is no opportunity for light work.
There is light work, he has been filing, he has been doing all kinds of things in the building, so there's absolutely, there is absolutely light work in that.
All right, but, but we gave him a situation where in order to do his light work, he had to uh, enter an area that was basically inaccessible, in your opinion, to someone on crutches, so I, I don't think that kind of makes sense, does it?
Yeah, but.
Now we want to spend eight thousand dollars to put stairs in because the guy that we want to give light work to needs.
No, I think we want to, we want to fix the building because it's not safe to bring prisoner, or, you know, people that have broke the law, it, it's not safe for anybody to be walking back there because the stairs are falling down, we'll start with that. It is when the cops go running out of the building, in which I, I understand that not everybody sees this. But when the cops go running out of the building, they run through the grass because they can't run up the stairs and easily, they can do it.
I, I'm not saying that this, first of all, we're backing up the truck, the stairs are not safe, I agree, they should be replaced. But I, I'm just saying not concrete at this time, that's all I'm saying.
And I don't have initial of that, and I will get, and I will get another estimate for that, I guess I'm just a little disappointed that, that there's, uh, uh, never mind. Uh, uh, apparently I'm just going to be quiet today.
Tiffany, um, is the concrete thing the Bill Lewis cement contractor, is that who we got?
Yes.
Yeah, I just found it too.
First I'll add, it's fifty-seven eighty-five. Well, there was two things, one fifty-seven eighty-five or one forty-seven fifty.
Sorry, I was wrong.
And I, I think the difference in price is the fifty-seven is remove existing wood steps and haul away. And the forty-seven fifty is we do deal with.
No.
Deletion, or okay, then I'm reading wrong.
The, no, the fifty-seven would be for the stairs and the walkway then, sorry, I was wrong, so it is a lot lower than I thought. Um, the, the other lower amount is actually doing a, is in addition to, if, again, later on down the road, if we don't end up doing anything with the building and you want to have like a wheelchair access, correct?
Concrete walk, blah, 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 blah.
And that is a long way.
Grading down to the existing, okay.
Correct, and that's, and that's one of those things that, again, I don't, I'm not foreseeing, I, he was there. It's been asked, we asked him to give us an estimate, it didn't cost us any money to get the estimate, nobody's implying that we need to put in a wheelchair access today. Um, so.
We should do it twenty years ago when the American Disability Act was passed forty years ago, when the American Disability.
And I guess that's, I guess that's all I'm trying to say at this point, I mean, we have literally gotten away with, you know, the things that we have gotten away with for so long, I'm just a little surprised by a little bit of the pushback of implying that we should have employees staying at home that have been injured because our building is not equipped for them, that, that's kind of what I heard from that, but again, this is, this is a topic that we're way, way far past what we're talking about, so.
So the bottom line is, is you're going to.
Wooden steps, just to get it fixed cheap and then see if it needs to get torn out anyway when we do the new build.
Which will have to be two separate contractors, so I will find out how much it is for the concrete and then we'll find out another contractor to come build stairs. So if anybody has a recommendation of a contractor that can come build stairs, um, let me know, because I don't know, I mean, I, 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 once again, we'll Google. I can Google it and find somebody, but if somebody has a recommendation, I'd be more than, I, I would love a recommendation. Because it seems like every time I find a recommendation, nobody likes the recommend, or every time I Google something, I have more pushback and just to be honest, it, it's easier if somebody could just give me a recommendation.
Well, I don't know whose idea it was to go with concrete, that's, that's what I'm trying to understand here, is that I, you know, this is a temporary, to me, it could be a temporary fix and, you know. So why, why are you wanting to do concrete when we don't know what the heck we're doing with that building, that's what I'm looking at.
And I, I'm not going to disagree, but again, we've had that conversation numerous times that we don't know what we're doing with the building, we've talked about doing something with the building for, since what, two thousand seventeen at this point? So if we never end up changing the building, are we still going to be saying this five years from now?
I, I'm sure they've been saying that for a lot longer than two thousand seventeen. I mean, the roof, the roof is a great example of that, so, uh, anyway, yes, it is painful for everybody, okay, it's definitely painful, sorry. Sorry, it's painful.
Um, no, it, it absolutely is, but I think the problem that everybody continues to, we're, we're start, we aren't starting, it's been ongoing, you, the amount of money that we spend each year on HVAC repairs and now a roof repair and, you know, rebuilding stair, you know, it's, it would be, we spend more, I have spent more time in the last thirty days trying to repair things as you guys are, since this entire conversation literally could have been talking about the roof, the stairs, the HVAC, I mean, it's everything.
Right. Okay, got it. Alright, so let's see, what else do we have, um?
The roof repair, if you guys want to talk about that.
Oh, I thought you were just going, I thought everybody was okay with that and you were going forward, I thought you already went forward, actually.
Not on the roof repair, yeah, I mean, you guys sent me a couple of emails yesterday, I hadn't heard from everybody and I'm, I would rather go through Brothers, yes, that's kind of what the answer that I was given and I will do that as long as no one has any issues Monday morning. And I don't hear any issues, so I'm doing that.
Good.
Progress.
Alright, excellent, um. I, I thought it was a great, I thought it was, I, it was great, okay, so, um, let's see, Jerome, uh, was there, uh, Tiffany, did you have anything else to say about a fall lake cleanup?
I have nothing to do with a fall lake cleanup, that is, that relies on that committee. Um, if somebody wants to do it, I have the ability to get dumpsters and I would be more than happy to help. Um, the estimate, I heard you guys briefly talk about that, um, that came about from Diane's conversation about getting people in there to clean out the lake. Um, again, it's just an estimate, that's just one person, uh, that was somebody that we had access to that could give us an estimate. Um, I don't know if you guys want to move forward with it, again, it's just for your guys' knowledge, I'm not signing anything, I'm not doing anything, obviously I can't because I don't have that amount of money laying around, you guys can do it for one day, three days, five days. Um, you guys, Diane had asked a couple of questions, I got the answers, I did forward those to everybody, um, and that's that, uh, you could coordinate a lake cleanup, you could just do this with these people, um, I don't have an answer, uh, that's just somebody, Diane had asked about what it would take to just have some people come cut some trees out. Uh, and that's what that was for, so if anybody has any will to move forward, let me know. Uh, and I would be more than happy to, to get legislation out, do what we need to do, appropriate money to do it. Um, maybe there's already money appropriated, but as far as that goes, you guys just need to let me know, you guys have that estimate, if somebody wants additional estimates, feel free, get me recommendations, because again, Googling it doesn't really work as well as, I mean, it works great, but if somebody knows somebody, it seems like that, that works a little better, um.
Sorry.
On the mud, on the mud record, oh, sorry. Uh, I just wanted to know if, is the mud records, is that over now for the year, I mean, that was an opportunity, we didn't.
Here's what I will tell you, that was Joe's thing, um, not, again, I, I can't speak for him. Uh, you had asked him to get you a couple of answers, I know that we never got those answer, I, I never got those answers as to where they were going to be put or if they were coming out. Um, I only reached out to them so I could get the estimate and I had, I was one of the ones that reached out to them in January, February. To me, it didn't sound very promising when I talked, in January, February, they had no interest in doing it. Um, and because it would have taken, or it would have taken two year, whatever. We, if, if somebody wants to go back and pull up the records from January, February, we talked about this already. Um, I, I know it's an option, but I also, you know, believe that there's an issue with the, the stems and sticks and all that kind of stuff that could cause a problem and it may not work. So, um, I, I don't disagree with Mark saying at least it's better than nothing, at least if we try it, what if it does work? Um, that's why we ended up calling some of the other companies, I don't know if it's still an option, I highly doubt it, you know, they were talking about doing it the first week of October. So, I mean, that's in two weeks, so I, I can't imagine that they could still do it this year. But i- if somebody wants to tell me to reach out to him and see if it's still an option, I would be more than happy, once again, Monday morning to put together legislation, pass it as an emergency and get them out here, if it's an option. So I, I don't know that we have six people that would say yes to an emergency, waving the readings to try, call me crazy.
The thing is, is that.
Everybody that the last guy that was out here didn't think that that would work, hydraulic dredging is not going to work. You know, and this guy, we're getting ready to spend money for a guy to come out here and tell us that, I'm sorry, my machine gets plugged up with all the sticks. You know, I've watched probably an hour's worth of YouTube videos about dredging lakes, hydraulic dredging. And the biggest problem is stuff getting stuck in the thing that sucks up the material. That only has little holes of like two inches, so anything over two inches is going to plug it up. And if we go forward with this, all it's going to do is spend money for the guy to tell us it isn't going to work. So I.
I don't, I don't know that I disagree with Tony, and, and Diane, you were there with, um, Metropolitan, he kind of implied that as well, I, I don't want to speak for him, but was that the census you got from him as well?
They, well, sure, uh, you know, granted, you have to listen to your source, the, the source, he doesn't do, they don't do, they don't do that, so, right? So his opinion is, you know, he does the, he does the dry dredging and so.
No, they do hydraulic, they do hydraulic, a one hundred percent, we have an estimate from them and they don't think it's going to work. I'm sorry, yeah, they do the hydraulic as well.
They, they, they weren't going, they won't, they refuse to give us, yeah, they don't want to do it, so they don't want to do the wet, wet dredging, they want to do.
Because it won't work.
Dry dredging, so, well, you know, again, he's not, he wasn't a fan, so, I mean, he, it's not his business, the other guy, they're in business to do this and sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't, and I think Joe was trying to talk him into it. Uh, giving it a try, even though they were pretty sure it wasn't going to work, so the mud wrecker people, so. I'll, my only point was that there's, there is twenty thousand dollars there in the lake account, so I don't think we have to, if we wanted to, you know, do a fall cleanup, if we wanted to employ, uh, these guys, assuming they could get this, since it's dependent on the lake going down, uh, you know, if they could keep their schedule open enough to be able to react to when, uh, when we would have a need for them, I, I, I'm saying that there's, we could use that money to get some of this other work done uh, this year versus getting nothing done this year, so, but that was my only point.
And then I think missing in this, we also have the Brad who wants to send three guys out.
That's what I was talking about, Brad.
Yeah. And that was the two thousand three guys, eight hours. And his intention is send in a tractor with a front loader and a chipper to feed brush through. And make trips down to Kurt's Brothers to dump every so often, once they fill up their big thing, oh, wood chippings. And two thousand dollars for twenty-four man-hours. For twenty-four labor hours.
It would take obviously more than that, so it would be two thousand dollars, it, that was a, yeah, a day for as many days as we would want them to do that and obviously it would take more than one day.
Yeah, well, but I'm, I'm just saying.
Oh, I know that, yes.
Yeah.
I've had, I've had Russell Tree, I've had Russell Tree come out for an entire day and work on my tree, so yes, I do know that, it will take more than a day, yes.
Yeah. But at the same time, um, since you're going to talk about tree removal, I had three guys out, take down two trees earlier this summer and cart them off and it took them maybe four or five hours and I got charged a lot more than two thousand, so.
Right.
I'll just put that there.
Like I said earlier in the, in the meeting here, uh, you know, when it comes time to doing this, I'd like to think that we'll have the lake, uh, drained enough that they'll be able to get to things a lot easier and they're not going to be knocking stuff down. We're talking about removing trees that are already down.
Yeah. And I'm just hoping that three guys, eight hours with, uh, with equipment that can lift up heavy things and move it without people going one, two, three.
Quite a bit done.
Yeah. So, you know, my initial question on it was two thousand, what does this get us, it gets us twenty-four labor hours. Um, assuming they're going to do good, if they come out and are sitting around on their stools sipping Gatorade for half the time, then we say, you know, we're not going to use you again. If they come out and get a lot done, it'll be, hey, great.
Exactly, you may get through the first one and realize that this is great, this worked well, let's do it again and have them come right back.
Right.
Oh, and Eric is telling me it's three guys plus the owner, so it's actually four guys.
Well, the owner's the one that's going to be sipping the Gatorade.
Right, that's right.
Put it this way, then, we don't have one of the guys spending their time sitting in the cabin of the, uh, of the front loader just picking up logs and putting them down, we have the three guys. The three guys working, actually working and an extra guy to sit and run the equipment and look pretty.
There's always, there's always has to be one looking pretty. There always has to be one.
I want that job. Just saying. So again, that's left up to you guys. Again, that I don't know that we have, I need to do anything. If we're just going to do the one day, that may be something I can just sign off on because it's under the, the three thousand, I would assume. There's appropriations in there to get stuff like that done. I mean, I know that there's money in a tree fund to get things done. I'd prefer it obviously from the lake, but again, that's something that I can talk to Kim and Leah. And see which way they want to go. If everybody's on board with a yea-nay on Monday. I don't have any problem talking about that if you guys want to, or if you guys just want me to move forward with one, you know, one time, one day. Tell me now and I'll call him first thing, or you know, Eric can coordinate with him Monday morning.
We need to coordinate that with the water being lower.
Well, they would. I mean, I'm just saying, we can give them the approval for when it goes down. That's all my point is and get them on the books for, it's going to be at least seven days from now. Because we know that it takes a few days.
That's what I would do.
I mean, yeah, if you guys are okay with that, Eric and I can coordinate with him Monday and just. Tell them that we'll, you know, we want them to do it. We'll start with one day. See how it goes. And if it works out well, we can either A, do a couple more, wait till the spring, do a couple. Whatever we decide we want to do. But I think it's a great idea.
I'm good on that.
Is there anybody that's not okay with it? Sounds like a winner. So I'll make sure that I can do it if it's, if we need appropriations. We have an appropriations on Monday. We'll fix it. That way we can get it done.
There's money there.
I believe so too. Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, we have hit on everything that, that was, we didn't talk about, does P and Z want to talk about anything?
Well, yeah, I, I, it's a beautiful segue, Diane, because Brian was supposed to look into the. The legislation that was passed to eliminate the need to go to planning and zoning for approval of building permits.
You know, and I, I, I did look into that and I had some information put together, but I forgot to have it in front of me right now and I'd rather not dig. But I'll, I'll, I'll have that on Monday.
And the other, the other. Issue I have with the code enforcement is this. This property improvement permit that people are being told they need to get. I've asked and the only, you know, where it says in the code that someone needs to get a property improvement permit. To do anything at their house because that's pretty much so the way the code enforcement officer interprets it. You know, if you want to, he would give, tell them people that were putting up solar panels, that they needed to get a property improvement permit. My question is, where does it say that? Other than the fee schedule. The only place you'll see it in our code is on the fee schedule. And it's my opinion that the fee schedule is not the place in the code that states that you need to get the. Property improvement permit. So, you know. I'd really, you know, our code enforcement and the things that we tell people that they need permits for, it's so messed up right now. It's ridiculous. And.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to chime in for ten seconds and I may be wrong on this, but the property improvement, I, I. I don't know if I'm wrong about this, so maybe I shouldn't even open my mouth because it may make me look really dumb. A lot of these are not necessarily permits from Minerva Park. But when somebody, again, does a window, a door, roof, those are all property improvements. And they do need, as of right now, they do need a permit from Franklin County. So every single person has to come into the Village of Minerva Park and get, and not, I'm not going to call it a permit. I'm going to call it a certificate. To take to Franklin County or to do it online. They get a certificate from us and do it. So all I'm going to say, Tony, is I. Would like to see if we're calling it different things and it's not actually what it is. Because I'm going to tell you this. We don't charge people for any of that stuff. We are not like, we don't, we're not charging. We charge for fence permits, deck permits. That's it. We're not, we don't charge people for windows, doors, roof permits, any of that to my knowledge. Maybe I shouldn't have said that. But I know a couple of the ones that I have dealt with, we have not charged them for it. It's basically a certificate. To go get the one from Franklin County. So again, don't quote me on that.
No, that's not accurate because like in Blaine Allen's case, he was told he needed to get a property improvement.
Correct. It's not a permit though. It is, he fills out a piece of paper. Well, no, I, I know, but it's, it's a certificate because it is required.
Zoning approval. That's the problem is that we are calling things, we're misidentifying the process.
I won't disagree with, I, I won't, yeah, I won't disagree, but. For, uh, let's just use Blaine because Blaine won't care that I said this hopefully. Blaine. Needed to come to the Village of Minerva Park just to get a piece of paper. He got his piece of paper and then he had to go to Franklin County, which he could do online. And pay Franklin County's fee. That's all he had to do. We do not cha, the village does not charge him twenty-five dollars or a hundred and fifty or whatever. Only Franklin County charges him, but we give him a certificate, which is required and Eric was in a meeting not long ago with me. We have to give them the certificate in order for them to get the Franklin County permit. So again, I don't want to say we're not calling it a different thing. And maybe it would be helpful.
Approval.
Eric, do you want to, am I, am I on the wrong page here?
No, Mayor. It's one of those things that we're, we're quite honestly still in the process of bringing something forward to you. Gene is actually going to be speaking to the attorney, which is one of the Franklin County prosecutors who works with the Franklin County Building Department. And we're going to be presenting, you know, a list of options to you as far as what you need to accept or what you don't need to accept or what you can waiver out. And, you know, obviously, in the meantime. In regards to some of these items that we're simply trying to move things along for our residents under the current procedure and policies of the Franklin County Building Department. So it's more of a. Helpful thing. And if we need to change the semantics around, I mean, there's something else. I'm sure we can do that, which. Sometimes adds extra layers of confusion and sometimes doesn't. But I'm sure we can figure out some good language. And deal with it that way if that would be better.
If I could ask Gene to look into something for me, because I can, I have yet to get someone to answer this question. Is in the residential code of Ohio in section one oh two, point ten, point two. It describes minor repairs that are exempt from approval. That part, that paragraph in the building code. Describes what does not need approval. Minor repairs do not need approval. I, I've talked to people at Columbus, the Columbus Building Official, Chief Bill, I talked to Franklin County. None of them will explain to me why that code does not apply to roofs. Dead or roof siding, windows and exterior doors. And that language has been in the building code for the thirty years that I've been looking at it. And it hasn't changed. The thing that has changed is what Franklin County just said, we don't think it's a minor repair. But they won't explain why doesn't that code apply to a roof. And it's been like that. It's like I said, for thirty years, that language has been in the code.
Yeah. I should say, thanks, thanks for defining that. That, that is a very well-defined question. I can look into that.
And, and I, like I said, it, to me, it, the, the language has always been there and is if, if you don't get into the, the electrical, the plumbing, move walls. Change the egress, you don't need to get a building permit. It's black and white. And, but for some reason, it's not just Franklin County, it's municipalities throughout Ohio. That have started to require people to get permits for roofs. But the code doesn't read that way.
Now, from what I'm hearing. Tiffany's saying though, is Franklin County and Franklin County might be doing this and not supposed to. But if they're doing this and saying, we need that piece of paper from Minerva Park and we're going to require you to get a permit. Then, I mean.
Well, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing.
Franklin County, Franklin County might not supposed to do that. And that's something that they have to change, but as long as they're still doing that. Us just saying, yeah, come down to the thing, say you're going to do it. We'll give you the piece of paper you need to do it. We know Franklin County's crazy.
Well, there are, no, there are.
Still do.
There are cases when you do need to get a zoning, zoning approval from the village. But we don't call it that. We call it a building, a, a, a residential or property improvement permit. You know, it's, it's, we call it a property improvement permit, but it's really zoning approval. And I'm not disagreeing that there are times when residents need to get zoning approval before they get their building permit. It's two different. Questions or issues.
Yeah, because if they're doing an addition on their house, they need that.
They absolutely have to get zoning approval and.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not disputing that. It's just part of, there's two problems here. Franklin County thinks that we need to get permits for a building permit for roofs. Exterior doors, siding and, and window replacement. Those are the things that should not require a building permit. Then there are those things that do require a building permit that we need to, the village needs to give zoning approval. For that, that their plan meets our zoning codes. And then they take it to Franklin County to get their building permit. So there's two different. Issues here.
So not to belabor this, we'll, we'll have options for the council to consider, right? We are in, in. Process of looking into it. Gene is having a discussion with the Franklin County Attorney and then we'll get something back to you on what we can and can't do and present you with your options.
Alrighty.
Alright, it is ten oh six. My goodness, we got a lot covered.
Progress.
Progress. Are we there? Is there anything else you want to cover?
Yes, we're getting ready to spend almost five hundred dollars to fix the computer. As you guys know, our finance papers were delayed a little bit. Our, our finance reports were delayed a little bit. And it's because the computer continually shuts off and then when Kim is at home, she still can't work. So we have gotten authorization to, because we had to go through UAN, it wasn't just a simple fix. So we are in the process of fixing the computer. So just as an FYI for you guys. That is being done. So hopefully by next month, we won't have the same problem of it being delayed. So. There was one other thing. I will get the quote for the concrete just for the walkway. And again, if somebody can get me a recommendation, Tony, if you want to go over there and you want to build some steps, give me, give me some ideas. But if anybody has a recommendation, I would love, and you know, somebody to send that over. And other than that, there is some, there is some conflicts on the fee schedule still. Eric and I kind of discussed not muddying the waters to get the information to Westerville City Schools. We want to get that fee schedule updated. But I do want to visit the fee schedule as soon as that one's passed. I know that may sound dumb. Except we need Westerville City Schools to have the fee schedule. But there are things on the fee schedule that I would like to visit. Solicitor permit is one of them because we're not actually following that right now. We are not charging people a hundred and fifty dollars for a solicitor's permit. So there's a couple of other things that we would really like to get visited. So if you guys can. I don't know if legislation wants to talk about it, if there's a committee that wants to take it up. Last thing I have, everybody wants to get on with their day and so do I. So I'm going to remind everybody once again. Actually, there's a couple of little things. The baby pool is going, has already been advertised to be out to bid. Somebody asked about that earlier. I did catch that, but I didn't want to chime in at that time. So it has been, it has, everything is done. It has been approved. You guys all got that email. It has been put out to bid. The last bid date is October first. So just as an FYI. The. Landscape, not the maintenance. We've, I, I, that committee, I don't know which committee it is, but I have not seen any progress whatsoever. I have not, I've not seen communication going back and forth. We have talked about whether or not we're going to have a maintenance team, whether or not we're going to hire out. I'm just going to remind everybody that in thirty days, we take, or forty-five days, we take over the rest of the MI development. You are, you guys are putting Brian into a position that's going to have to, which is our only maintenance person at this time, that's going to have to maintain both sections. Not saying there's going to be some crazy amount of work, but I'm just reminding everybody that we take that over. I will tell you.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, but they said they were finishing out the year.
They are cutting grass. They're not going to be cutting down trees that fall on the bike path. They're not going to be do it, fixing. Anything else over there. If, if a car drive accidentally drives through the, all my point is, is again, we have been talking about this.
Right, right, right.
We know it's coming and I'm not seeing communication. I'm not your guys' boss, but I can't do anything about this stuff. I have gotten quotes for you guys. I've presented quotes to you guys to try to help push you guys along. And I'm saying you guys because I don't know who, what committee this falls on. But all I know is I've seen no, if somebody wants me to continue to push forward, I need some. All I know is we, we start grass again in March, April. And I think it would be wise for as large of a development as we're going to be, to be put on somebody's books because most landscapers are signing contracts for next year. And if, and I have only been told that by two landscape people already. That was wondering what we were doing, that they're already signing.
This came up at the planning and zoning with, you know, people cutting grass in, in reserves. And doing things in the reserves that they shouldn't be. And I, I, I'm trying to get planning and zoning to concentrate on. Identifying what areas we're going to mow, what areas we're going to let go. You know, because it really is at the, you know, the heart of the conversation about, you know, what, what we require. You know, a landscaping company to do is we got to figure out first if we're going to start cutting areas every week or every year.
Right.
That, I think, is a thing that I'm trying to get planning and zoning to address is what areas do we want to mow?
And here's all I'm going to say, and this is probably me being a jerk, but everybody's met me before. So then planning and zoning needs to figure it out this week. Yeah, I don't know how much more borrowed time you got, you know, we're, we're in borrowed time. So if planning and zoning wants to determine which ones.
When I, when I got that second quote for you. For that landscaper to.
Yes.
Have fertilization, what are the weed control? You know, when he, the first question out of his mouth is, is what is the area that.
Correct.
Going on?
Exactly.
In terms of what, if MI can help us out with what. Or we could just call the contractor they're using. I can't remember who they're using. Do you have that? Who's that?
Blinding Gardens, I think, has been doing most of their landscaping work. That's a truck I've seen.
That's a landscaper, but I thought there was a different, a different company doing their mowing, but no.
I, 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 I just know that they're doing all the plannings and stuff out.
Yeah, no, this was like an Italian name. Lori knew them. I just remembered it was an Italian name and Lori knew them, but, you know, they should, you know, we need to know that. All I need, I can go get some quotes. I just need to know. That the, they're going to want to, they're going to ask me and I need to know how much land we're talking about that they're going to.
You are, you're, no, Tony is, Tony is a hundred percent correct. I mean, at this, we.
But they're doing it now. Somebody's doing it now. So how we want to do in the future is, is what, how we want to do in the future. That's great. I agree, but how, at least to get the quotes and we're in a hurry, how are we doing it now? Somebody knows how much it is.
Um, Eric, just a really quick question for you. I remember a long time ago, and I don't remember what meeting it was in, we had, and actually, it was the MI meeting. They brought a map that showed what they were currently mowing. It was just like a mow map. Is there a way to get a, an extra copy of that? And is there a way to? And this may sound really dumb, but do they have something that maybe that we could get from, from their landscape? Their plan, like we bush hog this area twice a year, blah, 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 blah. So is there a way to just find out what, like, like Diane's alluding to, if we could get something from them in writing? To where we could say this is what it currently is and then make alterations from that? That would be, I mean, that would be a great start for, and if you could just bring that to planning and zoning. So they have something to look at also from what it currently is to. So, but yes, that, that was, I, I just wanted to bring it up that we're, you know, we're now in September and I think I said this in June. I think I said it in July and I think I said it in August. So now I'm going to say it in September. We're now in September. We'll take this over in forty-five days and we still do not have. An idea if we're going to hire additional people. Or if we are going to. Have some, outsource it. And I don't think anybody's done any of the research to weigh those two options. At this point in time, all I'm doing is putting it out there. I can't make anybody do anything else, but there you go.
It would be a good idea for everyone to go out, all the council members to take a look at the, at the reserves and see. You know, like the, there's Reserve I, which is right behind people's houses. Are we going to mow that or not? You know, and, and, you know, MI may not have mowed some areas that we may want to mow. You know, so it'd be good for everyone to get up to speed as to how we want to maintain those from a grass cutting standpoint.
So, and I could be mistaken on this. I think I recall at one meeting, we saw like a twenty-five or thirty thousand dollar.
Thirty thousand dollars, right.
For what. For what, like MI was paying people to do things. And then my big question on that, that, and, and maybe it's been put out there and I missed it. How much do we currently spend in-house on the maintenance here? And, you know, if we have to hire chipper, a little daler to, uh, help them out, how much is that going to cost and would we need to buy more equipment?
Right, the quick answer is yes.
That was the analysis we were supposed to be doing and we, you know, I actually volunteered to move the finance and true, I have been working on this. And so have not, uh, not gotten finance, uh, it's finance team together and to get some numbers, but, but, uh.
Cause for me, that's just like, my decision making up on this is that, that cost comparison. If, if we can get a chipper for twenty grand plus, you know, a one-time ten thousand dollar lawn mower cost. And, you know, it comes out to, well, we could do it in-house for twenty five hundred or twenty five thousand a year over time instead of thirty. I, I lean towards in-house anyway, because then you have direct control and access. And you can say, get out there and mow this Saturday and you're the boss, not going to someone saying like, sorry, we can't make it Saturday. We're booked. Can we come out on Monday? Cause you know, the guy just works for you.
Right. And I just, you know, Mark, I'm so in agreeance with you. I think it was going to cost us a little bit more upfront, but I think long-term your lawn mower is going to last a couple of years. The only recommendation that I have for, for this is getting some commercial grade, um, equipment versus residential. We just replaced our weed eater for two hundred dollars because, you know, again, we're not, we, I don't know what, I hate to say this, but, because I'm, we just talked about it with the building. Um, I don't know what's going to happen. So I wasn't really interested in spending four hundred dollars on a weed eater to get a better grade because I don't know that we're going to need it next year. So it's, we would need more than one person. There's no doubt in my mind that we would need more than one additional person, because the other thing that you have to remember is there is a lot of other stuff that maintenance does do. Um, he does do some, some stuff for the chief. He does help out opening up the pool. There's quite a bit of stuff, just, you know, again, down trees, down limbs. So we wouldn't just be talking about one or two additional seasonal people. I think you're going to be talking about a couple additional seasonal people.
I think we could have with somebody, a maintenance department that could fix some stairs and fix a roof.
That is absolutely, I do not disagree. And I don't disagree. And I, I, I think, and I'm going to say this, I believe Brian probably could fix the roof if he had help. He doesn't have any help. So we don't have to, you know, ripping off a roof and doing all of that by yourself is a little difficult. It's going to be a couple of day project and then nothing else gets done because he's still currently cutting grass a little bit.
Well, yeah, we haven't geared up to have a maintenance department.
No, and I, I don't disagree. I think that there's, you've got, other than pouring the concrete, I think that you could have, I don't disagree. That twenty two hundred dollar thing could have been covered. I think that the stairs could have been covered and done a long time ago. Um, so I'm, I am in total agreeance. I mean, I understand we could do a price comparison and yada, 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 but I prefer in-house because I prefer the fact that if it rains for twelve straight days, we're not number three on somebody's list. So we're number one. As soon as it quits raining, we can go out there and get started. So, I mean, that's just my two cents, but who am I?
Alrighty. Can I move to adjourn?
I'm in.
Uh, okay. Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor. Okay.
Have a good one.
Hey, Gene, are you still on here? Gene, Gene?
Whoops, still here.
There he is. You're muted, Mayor.
Oh, sorry.
There you go.
Is Gene still on there?
Yeah, still here.
Hey, Gene, stay on there for two seconds.
Okay.
And let everybody else go.
So I'm in, I'm controlling this meeting. I'm going to have to end it at some point.
Just turn the, turn the, um.
If I end it, Gene's gone.
No, can you, is a record, are we still recording?
Uh, yeah, actually we, I should do that. You're right. I should, uh.
Anybody can stay on here. I don't care who stays on here. It's not just personal for, I just don't want to record.